Thank you for being patient. Good evening, everyone. The workshop meeting of the Board of Trustees. Wednesday, November nineteenth. If you're joining us online and in the room. A couple of announcements. Congratulations to Justice-elect Luke Hilbert. The write-in ballots were counted today at the Board of Elections. We received the majority of the votes, so he will take office to serve the first, so continue as Acting Justice until then, and then we'll become our Justice Commissions. The last yard waste pickup is tomorrow morning, so take your beet leg leaf bags out tonight. And the Christmas tree lighting is Sunday, the seventh, at 5:00 P.M. Any other announcements? Item two, opportunity to add or modify the agenda. Any requests? Okay, moving on to board business. The first is the discussion to vote and approve the contract with Land and Wood regarding professional training and coursework, licensing-related expenses. We have worked with the Labor of Turning to determine that we can enter into this contract, the village covering the costs of the training in exchange for three years of commitment to the village. And if Landon were to not successfully complete the training or decide to leave earlier than three years, we need to repay the village. Any questions on the contract? Okay, someone like to make a motion to approve the signing? I made a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Landon Wood regarding professional training, coursework licensing, and to accept those options of employment. So, all in favor?
Hi.
Next, we have Will with us, our consulting engineer. He might be, hang on, hang on, Will. There we go. Ability to unmute. Oh, he's here, buddy. Yeah. There we go. Hi, Will.
Hello.
So, you'll recall that in August, in the monthly report of the Water and Waste Water Department, there were, there was the fourth occurrence of an exceedance of standards for fecal coliform. In that brief moment, there was no talking, no decisions taken. Anyway, that is what triggered, those overages are what triggered the DEC to inspect. You have in front of you the inspection report, and I just want to clarify, I had a bit of a heart attack because this this is a compiled report of violations over time, so there are some things that are not current. They're violations that have happened in the past, but they continue on the record of the wastewater treatment facility. If that is correct, Will? That's how Matt explained it to me.
Okay, yeah, that's the way Matt explained it, then. Yes.
So, you want to talk us through? I trust you have specific questions for Will. What we need to do, we need to come into compliance by December 1st. And that includes bringing our Speedies permit up to date. We have undertaken that process already. It's been submitted, correct, Will?
Yes, it's by December 1st, they want a response. I don't know if they-
I mean, the Speedies application.
Yes, it was something, we've been working on that over the, throughout the summer on the reauthorization of that. They've, a month or so ago, they asked for additional information, additional testing. We've provided that. The village has provided that to the DEC, and now in their hands to comment on it. They won't need any more testing, or if there's any additional information they require as part of the reauthorization.
Okay. Discussion among the trustees, we have in front of us a draft that I wrote with Will and with Matt's review to respond to the report and confirm the timeline for coming into compliance.
Wait, what timeline? Let me try have that timeline. Maybe is this here, right? Okay.
It's, it's actually, that is very, that is what was sent out last night. Give me a share with there's another one here. So, what, what modified from last night is that Will confirmed item three regarding the flow meter calibration. Now, go ahead.
So, you got, you got satisfactory answer to your question, that provided that we resolved all of these issues, the daily violations wouldn't be levied.
I haven't submitted this yet. That's, that's among the
Okay.
We, we feel pretty confident, right, that those violation charges don't start until December 1st?
It's that they could start. The DEC generally is not in the, trying to collect money, they're trying to drive compliance, so I think as long as we're showing good effort and responding to their to their request for additional information, I don't know exactly what the the sort of fines they're, they're going to levy on on the village, but the village is certainly taking active steps to address the compliance issues.
And this, and this letter will confirm the steps we are taking and the timeline we're working on. It reads like that. I mean, it reads like we're taking this very seriously and have real actions, and which is good, the maximum fine is, what, thirty-seven thousand dollars a day? I mean, that's shocking. Yeah. So, that's, we will not, we will not, not comply is the point.
And just having a question on the fecal coliform issue, because I remember
A question for Will.
Oh, that was, that was one of the, you don't know this? I think that was one of the first meetings I attended, that came up.
It was in August. Yep, it was in Matt's September monthly report, which encompassed activities in August. Right. And the letter from the DEC confirms so you get, you can, you can be over, not can be over, but there are up to four allowances, four overages, and then after that inspection is required. So, there were two fecal coliforms on the seven-day test, one on the thirty-day test, and one on, I can't remember what bod, dance, barb.
But the one we discussed, was that the last one in that series?
That's right.
Okay. And are we confident that we've kind of resolved that issue, that it's not going to recur? We still understand what the cause was?
So, Will, I will do my best to explain, and if you need to, to jump in, please do. So, our wastewater treatment plant works basically like a biodigester, digester. We use microbes in the, in the pools to digest the waste. It's like, it's like sourdough bread, you have to you reseed it.
Yep.
So, when the, when the fecal coliform levels went up, that, that tells us that the bacteria levels had fallen. And some of that, Will can answer reasons why, but it did drop, and Matt adjusted basically reseeded the pools to start the bacteria digesting again. Is that an accurate description?
Yes, it had to do with airflow into the, into the process as well, but Matt made adjustments. There's a little bit of an art to those type of plants. And he made adjustments so that way it could operate the way it needs to.
Yeah. I'm not trying to nail anyone, I just want to understand what the question was, so that we
Yes, and we are, we are within compliance levels now. The last monthly report, which we reviewed last week, without last week, was in compliance.
Well, thanks, Herb. I'm glad you've been working with Matt on, on reviewing the permit. When, when did the old permit expire?
The village received a notice about the lapse in the permit coverage towards the beginning of the year. We submitted the initial responses. I want to say it was in March or February, shortly after receiving that notice, and that began the process of DEC's review, request for testing, submitted those tests, requesting for additional testing, additional information, and all those tests took took time to come back and resubmit the information, and there was also the review was on DEC's hands for a period of time as they reviewed things.
And we also, as I recall, needed to do technology, some technology upgrades in order to host and I don't know if I'm going to be saying this correctly, but we needed to upgrade hardware and software to be able to comply with the new Speedies requirement, correct? That in the spring, was it the spring or the summer?
I didn't discuss that specifically with Matt. That, that could be.
Well, if you remember, we had several votes on hardware and software upgrades to, so that we could move up to the next level for Speedies. Whatever that may be, it's not, clearly, it's not my bailiwick, but it is Matt's and it is Will's, and so any further discussion? I can't remember if it's in here, or if we've just talked about it another time. Of developing a kind of a strategy for upgrades to the plant. And, and I think, Will, that on is helping with that, is that, is that right?
Yes, well, work with Matt to kind of come up with the items that need to be addressed and are replaced, and he is, he's working with a lot of equipment that's been repaired and repaired and repaired again. Some of it might need replacement at this point, or total rehab, refurb, refurbishing of the equipment or pumps and parts like that. So, we'll help Matt develop a list of those items and so he can prioritize them and present that to the, to the board.
And then time for budget?
Yeah, we're planning that too, I think.
Budget, budget planning starts in February. I talked with Matt and Will about prioritizing short-term, midterm, and then long-term. We are looking at a plant that is fifty years old, and at some point, we have to talk about, we have to talk about upgrades to the plants. So, that's, that's a longer-term capital project. So, what I'm hoping that you all present to us as we move forward is that short-term, midterm, long-term.
Sure, yes, of course.
It's just, we are, we are dealing with the reality of old infrastructure all around the village, and we are lucky enough to be the ones having to fix it. We can't be put off anymore. Okay, thankful. So, I need a motion to authorize me to submit the letter on behalf of the village. Need a motion?
Make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the letter to Department of Environmental Conservation.
All in favor? Hi, bye. Thanks, Will, for giving us part of your evening.
All right, everyone. Take care.
Contribution for events. So, we had some back and forth with the glow. The chamber wanted to refresh the event a bit. They were considering having a parade similar to what Shakespeare does in the fields around the New Theater with the paper mache puppets. We talked with them about what it would take to manage traffic for a parade in terms of numbers of officers blocking off streets, et cetera. They decided that was not something that they could afford to do as a, as a commercial detail, and so they modified, and this revised plan, version two, is the modification that will allow the event to go on on the sidewalks, not rather than the streets, the paper mache puppets will be stationary and then walked down Main Street for the musical performances at the bottom, and it'd be around the folks who are performing, the Foundry Montessori School and East Mountain Studios. Questions, discussion? I want to say that the chamber is, has been really great about working with us and compromising to get us to a place that they could live with and we could manage. So, I appreciate that. Any other discussions? I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the application for Cold Spring a Glow Friday, December 12th, twelve twenty-five, and date Monday, December fourteenth.
Second. And then to optimize all of our business up to the top. Approval of bills, who has the batches? So, we have, we have one very large check, which is the next payment for the Fair Street project, and then the others are, the second batch is regular bills. Who has the batch?
I'll make a motion to approve Bill's Batch Eight Two Two Four, an amount of four hundred seventy-three thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents for Northbrook or Fair Street project.
All in favor? And before we move on to the next batch, just to say that we had the, the final walkthrough yesterday with Northbrook on Fair Street. It's substantially complete. There were a couple of outstanding items that need to be addressed. The grass seed that was planted along the slope and along the edge of where the, along the fence for Mayor's Park didn't take that well. So, we're holding back some payment for them to come in and finish speeding. One of the, someone hit the, I don't know if it was a construction vehicle or a driving vehicle, hit the new curb, and took a chunk out of the new curb. So, that needs to be repaired. And then the third thing, which was of greatest concern to me, was at the north end of the park, the area where the head wall is, where the two new culverts come out. You'll remember that it used to be surrounded by trees and brush, and now it's all exposed, so they could do the construction. All right? And it was, it's, it is much more open, and I think much more appealing as a place to go. The fence stops about eight feet Feel like a failure. South of it. Scared after last week. The fence is about eight feet south of that, so what we have Bugsy was with me, and now what we've asked them to do is move that twelve-foot fence right up to the edge of the the head, the head wall, so that it will be like the one that's already in place at the head, the head wall at Spring Brook. So, but a taller fence, so that there isn't a, it's less inviting to walk back in there. So, with those, with those three items, oh, and there's a stump that needs to be removed on the slope. And otherwise, it's, it's complete, done, and it's working. Yeah, thank God.
It looks good down there. It's nice striking down on the road.
It does. Now, now we need to, to press for a sidewalk the rest of the length. And then we'll add signage for parking. Bugsy is putting the, the signage that was there before back up on the fence. He's returning. If you remember, it was just a gaggle of signs on various topics, including basically like no dog walking, no joy, no happiness. So, he's putting back up the park mobile signs and the dog, the permit requirement for dogs, and then we need, we were needing a new sign anyway for Mayor's Park. So, I was talking with Alex about incorporating the, a new sign for Mayor's Park in with it, but for now, the parking meters will be up. And that parking area is just Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or it's like, it's a lot? That's, that's metered all the time, do you think? Anyone else?
Who needs to move it?
Yep. I'll go for it. I make a motion to approve batch number eight two two five, in the amount of two hundred and twenty-four thousand seven-six dollars and fourteen cents, the remaining vouchers. What are the big items in this batch?
Insurance.
Oh, insurance.
Pension. Second.
All in favor? Thank you for reviewing them, me too. Arrival of minutes from previous meetings. If folks are comfortable, we would make a motion to improve, approve the submission, the clerk's submission of minutes for five seven twenty twenty-five, three twenty-six twenty twenty-five, two five twenty twenty-five, twelve four twenty twenty-four, and one twenty-nine twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor? Bye. What's left is discussion for those modifications to chapter one twenty-six. Oh, while we're on you were making the comment about Hilbert. My suggestion, if other folks are comfortable with this, the minutes are now, Marjorie has been diligent about connecting all of the backup, which obviously goes online with all of the minutes. I don't myself feel like I need to grab a paper copy of the backup, just the minutes, so that would save us a big print job. That's cool? Because we can see it online. It's, it's available, but we don't have to waste all that paper. And thank you for agreeing. On top of it. And we have Jonathan with us, Jonathan Detroit. Who is standing in for John first tonight. So, go ahead, for the kids' speak, please, to be allowed. Thanks for being on, Jonathan.
Hi, everyone. Hello.
So, we had public hearing on the twelfth. We had written feedback, we had verbal feedback and written feedback. The public record was kept open for written comment through Tuesday. Marjorie has sent out to all of us what we received, is also available in the folder there. The one that I did not receive, maybe others did and I missed it, but there was one from Taravamos with a question regarding one twenty-six dash eighteen point seven that I think you will be able to answer, but I didn't see it. So, we'll, we'll go through it. Okay, so I'm not the only one who wants to see it. Okay. There are a few downstream items from the changes on Fair Street and Lund Terrace, which need to be incorporated into the final draft that we vote on. And that is, there's, there are a series of, if we decide to proceed as on Fair Street, there are a series of related pieces in the chapter that enable the one-way roadway during mass times, prohibited turn intersections in two locations, the northern and Cross Street. And then a year, there was one yield intersection at Lund and Terrace, which no longer needs to be there. So, I just want to confirm that Jonathan did inform me that, because these are cleanups, we do not need to reopen hearing to accommodate these in the final draft that we will vote on at a subsequent meeting, not tonight. And regarding the yield intersections, it would be a repeal and reserve. And reserve because you would have to change all the numbering in the chapter after, otherwise, we just keep that chapter as repealed and reserved. Questions on that? Okay, well, let's talk about, let's start first with Fair Street. And the question before us is will we, does, does the board, after consideration of the draft and public comments, wish to extend park, no parking on Fair from Maine to the village boundary on the east and west side? Discussion. We're done. And we need a direction to go in to finalize the draft.
Well, I'll I think after the comments that we've received like we've done our due diligence and listening and being thoughtful about how changes will go that particular block. People go to church, so I'm, sorry, my, my voice is going to be off. Yeah. And I think, thinking back to that particular event, but events that have happened since, but that particular event that caused that concern about the fact that there's a real need to be able to have emergency exits for for people, for vehicles, for police and emergency responders on that, that is, really sticks in my mind, and it was very sort of pivotal. I think for a lot of people in the community, and was, was scary, and I, and without having that outlet, that like opportunity to get people out or down and around and out was it, we're lucky that it didn't end up being a much more serious and dangerous, and, you know. An event that would have caused harm to people. So, you know, while I appreciate the the concerns that people have, I, I think myself, there is a large parking lot, there's handicap facilities that have been built into the parking lot to make it possible for people to get to the church. Just sort of thinking about that community in particular, that has been very vocal on this issue. It is not personally, and nor do I think it is for anyone else on this board. Like, I hope it is, is not an interest to, to hurt or, you know, make people's lives worse or more uncomfortable. I think it's, it's really like a bigger issue of like the community at large, and and it's been working, the changes that we made have been working, and we will work when there are situations that need, that are needed to open up the street, and I think that is the, a very fair resolution of, so I the changes.
Also on Lady Loretta parishioners, and I say this with all kindness to the parishioners and Father Lutz, I looked at the, the markings for disabled spot, or the ADA compliance spot in, in the church, which are right next to, as you pointed out, to be a access point for those people with disabilities, and there, you can't see them, they're indistinguishable, they're, 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 they're there, but you wouldn't know they were, because they've just been worn out and worn away over time, so as a small step to trying to find resolution or, or at least small steps to helping things along, I think if those, if those parking spots were much easier and clearer to see, that would be a, a small help for the people that were looking for that type of parking, and I think the village may have offered to, to help with that, right?
We talked about at department heads last week, or the week before, Bugsy said he would be happy to help identify, you know, delineate the parking spots, and in particular ADA spots within the lot, and we, the village would pay for the paint and give the labor to do that to help. Go ahead.
It's hard to park efficiently in the lot because there aren't spaces. I live right there, and I see naturally, it's, yeah, it's tough to figure out where you ought to park, so I think, I mean, Bugsy do that, it's great. We all have it's small spaces here, and so we have to make the most of all of our spaces. I also remember, I mean, maybe, you all might remember this, from the first, when we were first adopting this, the revisions to this chapter, there was a short time where we proposed permanent weekend parking, right, it was paid parking, I think, on Fair Street, and residents were very concerned about driveway access. That because it's, because it's a very narrow road and the congestion that's there already, so you know, we didn't hear from them this time, but
Other than people coming into the office to say how much more manageable.
Yeah.
It was without the, the parking.
Yeah.
The periodic parking.
Yeah.
But I also want to say something about Fair Street, kind of in relation to High Street, because I live on Fair Street, and to avoid the appearance of conflict. I've lived on that street for twenty-four years. It's second to Main Street. To Main Street, I would say, and the volume of traffic that passes on it, so it's not like High Street in that sense. There are delivery trucks, there are commuters. There's a church, there's no church on High Street, there's a restaurant, there's no restaurant on High Street. There's a condo complex, there's a condo complex on High Street. The village garage, there's a sewer plant. The village garage, there's a sewer plant. And there are a lot of tourists and hikers that come that way. And roughly ninety five percent of the time that I've lived on that street, there was parking. And it was, you know, it had its consequences, getting out of the driveway, waiting for people to pass by, people going the wrong way. But I didn't complain about it. I adapted to it and I got on with it. And I tried to find meaning in what the challenge of that was. But I just want to make the point that whatever I may say in reference to First Street in terms of a vote, it's a very different street, the High Street.
Okay. Aaron, any thoughts from you on the High Street, I mean, the Fair Street question?
We I'm in favor of keeping the parking on Fair Street as it's been over the last many months. I think that's improved circulation and reduced a lot of confusion. You know, I do acknowledge that that's been effectively an exception made for this one institution for a really long time. And you know, I think I think it's notable as you pointed out, that we didn't have any residents of the Fair Street. Believe that the other comments to
Not this time.
Think it's time to say hey, this is a bad idea, this is a good idea. It was, it was the several members of the church. So, you know, I do appreciate that. But you know, this, the the village is changing and I think, you know, we have to understand the realities of of that and and it's going to affect all of us in in different ways. So.
Um, I do, I do want to point out, because obviously I have not been part of many of the conversations here because of Family Matters, but the and if this has been brought up.
This is a Fair Street.
Yep. But the new diagonal parking at Mayor's Park, this no parking on the west side of Fair Street doesn't, that that excludes that, right?
Yeah.
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 If you got missed because doesn't read as obvious.
You think that it needs clarification and except except I don't know why. I have to look at it to remember how it's written.
It just says no parking on the west side.
I mean, if we can, we can add in there for clarification, we can add sefting municipal lot and the
You miss one, did you not?
Yeah.
The the street, but I believe that they have all stolen shit.
Section.
Let me use this first up. Oh, the section in the code, you mean?
One point six, yeah.
And it's on page one twenty six, thirty and thirty one. So so visually that would be intent to have that that area open. So it's making sure that the words better reflect that. And then off that Fair Street. There are a couple of things that I think are important to have in the in the record relating to Fair Street. One, the condition has been as is for an entire year. We made, we made, we pulled parking on a temporary basis for public safety concerns a year ago. In that time, the officer in charge has had a very engaged relationship with the priest, letting him know that if there are events or special masses where you need additional parking, let me know and we'll make sure it happens for you. So he's accommodated weddings, funerals, the Cardinals visit. And has been very responsive. So there is always an opportunity for any church in the community to ask for help from the Cold Spring Police Department with overflow for special events. In that time, there have been no cancellations of mass, right? Everyone got to mass. There has been no concern that mass could not proceed. So there is that, we've had, and we've had. It's it's been a year like that. So I, if if we were making this decision without having that behind us, I think I would have concerns. But we have that, we have that track record of the church being okay. And I think it is also notable that there were so many elements in the code, so many sections of the code that had to have specific reference to masses to accommodate a particular congregation. And they were modifications that created a one-way street part of the time that restricted turns at two intersections part of the time. And I think it was, as Aaron has suggested, that was, that was one reality when the village wasn't covered, you know, wasn't, we weren't experiencing over tourism. It is very confusing for people who are visiting with the signs that say no turn from X time to Y time, they drive around the signs. And then they're going the wrong way on Fair Street. This has been an ongoing concern from the police department to ask us to please get rid of the part time one way on the weekends. And the other reality is that there isn't a way to to keep that parking on the street to just the church. Because once it's parked in for mass, visitors come in behind it and then it's blocked in for the day and we're all, we're all dealing with the consequences. You, Aaron, I don't remember which one of you said about traffic flow, but it is an approved, it is an approved traffic flow. I would like to note that in addition, the parking lot for Our Lady of Loretto, they are the only church with a sizable parking lot. St. Mary's has a smaller parking lot. So there were, there were questions raised about discrimination and how it was different. I think among the ways that this is different is that this church has a parking lot. And I mentioned in the first public hearing, if I want to make sure that it's stated in public again, that we have yet to, we have enabling legislation to expand the resident parking district to other streets in the village. We have not operationalized it yet. It was a ton of work to operationalize the middle portion of the village. We still need to improve that area with signage, et cetera. So before we move into the, we had a conscious choice as a board, some of us who were here then made a conscious choice not to press on with the residential parking in the upper village until we'd had the opportunity for the churches that would be impacted to be part of the conversation, just like we had a parking committee for the middle part of the village. I think over this winter, we need to reconstitute another parking committee that thinks about how we operationalize in the upper village and how can we accommodate those churches that don't have parking lots? There's no reason that St. Mary, I'm sorry, Our Lady of Loretto can't be part of that conversation as well to look at how we handle, how we handle churches throughout the district. So this is not the end of the story, but I think what what these changes do is level the playing field among all of the congregations and it does not anymore privilege one, one congregation over over others. And that has been the case in the code as it is right now. And not for nothing, this has not always been the case in one twenty six. If you look in the history of changes in the chapter, it has been, parking has been on and off and on and off. This is not new to us, this problem. But I think that this is the right thing to do. So I too am in favor of proceeding with the creation of no parking on Fair Street except for the mayor's lot, mayor's park lot and the municipal lot. And undoing those three temporary items in the code, which is one twenty six dash twenty eight, schedule one, one-way roadways. Removing Fair Street from that, one twenty six dash twenty nine, schedule two, prohibited turns at intersections. Cross Street will no longer have to have a prohibited turn. One twenty six dash twenty nine, schedule two, prohibited turns at intersections. Northern Avenue will no longer need to have prohibited turns during mass time. Any other discussion on that point? Okay. So we'll move on to High Street and I just saying out loud to help me remember to put a pin in the question about from panel. I just Yeah, sure. Well, if we have it on screen, we can read, Laura can help read it out. We'll just hold for a second to table Andrew back. So first a note from from the village attorney, the question was raised about the provision of free public parking and how it could be allocated in the district, if it could be allocated in the upper portion of the district when operationalized. The other is the answer is it can be. The legislation requires at least twenty percent parking. This a minimum. So we can, in where we believe it appropriate for reasons of traffic flow need, et cetera, we can create more public parking if and I want to be clear that the impetus for this change that we're talking about on High Street was a year ago, began a year ago, when we started the conversations about opening Northern and Fair for an alternate ingress, egress route to lower portions of the village. We knew when we, the officer in charge recommended to us making all of the north side of Northern Avenue no parking, so that so that the top, most narrow portion of the street at the top on the nine D end was open on both sides. We knew we had to reallocate the pre-parking that would be lost there. Among the the recommendation of Trustee Starbuck had been the lead on the parking plan. She was really the the brain that operationalized the parking plan. And she and Officer Jackson recommended that given use patterns on High Street, we consider the relocation of the public parking from the north side of Northern Avenue to the east side of High Street. That is something that we talked about during the budget cycle. You'll recall, I asked Eliza if she had recommendations at the time that would impact our budgeting for signage, our budgeting for materials, et cetera. And her only recommendation at that time was that modification on the High Street. She was, we were not, we did not go down the pathway of talking about fines and fees, that's a conversation that can happen in the next budget cycle. So we have, we have talked about in varying degrees and ways, this switch since Matt made his first recommendations. We talked about it at budget time, identifying it as her recommendation. And now we, here we are at the point of making the decision about it. So I want to make clear for the public that the EV chargers are not the impetus for this change, that this change had been on the table and recommended prior. It is very easy, I think, to perceive that it is the driving factor. It is not, and the record reflects that. So the questions before the board are, you know, whether we wish to convert any portion of High Street on the east side from residential parking, permit parking only or to open all of the east side or part of the east side to free public parking. One of the reasons we landed on the EV chargers here, there are multiple threads coming through here. And where the EV chargers come into the mix is that Laura has been working with the grant from NYSERTA since we took office trying to locate the EV chargers. This is the fifth location that we've studied. They were, each of the previous locations were rejected for reasons that we have discussed in public session. We landed on High Street after we had the discussions about relocating the public parking from Northern to High. So it happens that those two work together. But one did not drive, the EV chargers are not driving the discussion about public parking on High Street. So I want to make sure that that's clear in the record and clear in people's minds. So discussion. How are we feeling about what we've heard from the public? What the options are before us and the goals that we're trying to accomplish?
Okay.
Somebody's got to start.
Yeah. So my own personal observations over the last month, because I've been even watching what goes on in High Street and other streets. It is that it's heavily underutilized compared to other streets in the lower village. Last night, I had a little tour of the streets. Cars parked in the street on High Street were fifteen. On Garden Street, there were eighteen cars parked in the street. And on Church Street, there were thirty one. So not only last night, but other times that I've been through the village and looked. There are a lot of vacant bases there. It seems, given the pressures of finite space and over visitation, it's an underutilized resource in terms of parking. It's the same on the weekends. I've seen many streets in the village that are absolutely congested. High Street is pretty open. And I don't think you can displace all of the problems to other streets and other members of the village in pursuit of you know, an ideal of a quiet residential street, given those realities of finite space and heavy volume of visitors. And I don't think these problems began with COVID. In fact, you could go back to the establishment establishment of this in eighteen eighteen or eighteen forty six and river traffic and industrialization and so forth. In my own experience, and I moved here in nineteen ninety eight, I would say that nine eleven had a big impact. Financial crisis had a, the collapse had a big impact. Explosion of social media has had an impact. COVID two and also northward expansion from from Westchester up into Parton County, that kind of over still. And you know, business owners are taxpayers too. This is something that I'm appreciating more as a, as a trustee is seeing things primarily from a residence, residence taxpayer point of view, but business owners also through rent pay taxes. I think they have some entitlement and some input into the question of how parking can serve their activities. I know there were a number of people who spoke last week and public. Who who felt that High Street was underutilized and should be looked at in terms of the availability of of parking. And I think, I mean, the legislation that we're looking at is, I think you said Kathleen, it's 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 not intended to keep the public off public street. There has to be some kind of your local balance. And I also know in in the whole back and forth and friction in the conversation around High Street. Both you Mayor Foley and Trustee Bozey reached out to people who had concerns. You offered to have conversations, to talk about it. And to the best of my knowledge, the parties were were unresponsive. They didn't take the opportunity to to come and have further conversation with you.
Other than the public hearing.
Other than the public hearing, other than in a, in a public setting. So again, I refer back to the other members of the public who felt that High Street was an underutilized resource. I think four, four or five households on High Street. I think four households, four or five households on High Street are registered opposition, the majority have not. And I just don't think it's, it's, it's fair to displace all of the problems that we have from one street that has a lot of excess capacity and expect, you know, the rest of the villagers to, to shoulder that burden. It, it, it's tough. I mean, I think it comes down to, you know, we have to share in the costs as well as the benefits. And I think there has to be some level of fairness to sacrifice to some extent. So, yeah.
There's, um, I think my, the kind of first clear guidance for us is that we have a requirement by law to have the twenty percent open parking. And I think we worked really hard to be, to achieve this residential parking and the paid parking that I think overall has been a really big success. And, and part of it is, is, is making sure that we have that, that twenty percent. So I think that's what, to me, really drives this decision. I think that there are other, other pieces to the decision of, you know, balancing interests and I think it's my policy perspective that is maybe similar to what Andrew was saying, that we all are in, in this small village, we are all kind of sharing the, the piece that, that the we, we're sharing the shared pieces essentially, right? They're all kind of like those, those benefits and, and requirements to make a village work and get placed throughout the village. And I think we've all come to, to kind of find those, those pieces that are on our own streets. And so, so I recognize that that is, that, that is part of what we are asking of, of High Street, with these parking changes. And I appreciate the feedback from residents. And, but our, our job here is to be thinking from the village, about the village as a whole. You know, I think that there's, and, and, and also to say, this is not a forever decision. I mean, we are making a policy choice with some signs and, and it makes, and, and not to, to say that that doesn't have an, an impact the next day when it is implemented, but, you know, of, of decisions that we are making. If we find that, that conditions change or there are other opportunities, you know, we've made these change, you know, there, there are changes that can be made again. So, it's a big deal to make a, a change to a code, but it is not a, it is not a forever change.
I think that's a really important point to draw out, Laura, because when, so there was a committee that built the concepts of the plan and with goals in mind. And that had to be operationalized, right? And another set of, another set of us had to operationalize it. And we acknowledged in public and have always known that this would not be perfect in the first round, might not be perfect in the eighth round, that resident parking is something that we would have to assess and make modifications as things evolved. When we operationalize the upper portion of the village, it's entirely possible that where that we have, will be able to make different decisions about where public parking goes, because we'll have a sense of how we deal with the churches, how we deal with the streets in those areas, which streets we operational, operationalize. We have a number of them to choose from, but we don't have to operationalize all of them. We have to, we have to be responsive to conditions. And frankly, we have got to be responsive as Fjord Trail continues its plans for development, because that will impact the village immensely in terms of, in terms of pedestrian traffic and vehicular traffic. And we need tools to be able to respond to that change, whether it ends up in the river as some would like, or if it ends up being footbound as some would like on Fair Street or on, on nine D, whether it goes on nine D at all. Those are all conversations that are going to happen. They're all conversations that are going to be had, and the village has to be able to adapt to the conditions that result from them. So you are right, Laura. We are exactly in keeping with what we presented when we put the resident parking program forward and put it into law, is it's not going to be perfect, we are going to make changes. And here we are, looking at a change to make, and it's not the last change that we'll make, others.
So, I think it's important to kind of, to go back and look at the, how this is started, and it was really from taking away parking on Northern, right? And which I am not protesting, but I very reluctantly accept that, actually. Because I, the way that it was brought about and the incident that was still was blown out of proportion, but like I said, I will reluctantly defer to the officer in charge and his recommendations there. But, like my reasoning on Fair Street, it's been in place for about a year, more or less. And there has not been a crisis of parking anywhere in the lower village in that time. So, it's not like we have to move those cars to a specific place near that location or to, to High Street in specific. We do have to accommodate the twenty percent public parking, but as you validated at the beginning of this discussion, we could pick, expand the residential parking area to any of the other streets that we've been authorized to do so. Say my street and Orchard Street, for example, which currently has free open parking, right? Every day of the week. We can make that a residential parking area and then make it free parking in the residential parking area, which doesn't have changed one bit what people, how people can use it, but it reduces that pressure of the twenty percent. And all of a sudden, now the residential parking area has twenty percent response again, without effectively changing anything from where things are today. So, I don't think, between the fact that it's been that way for many, many months, and it hasn't been a crisis, and we have an alternative, I'm actually against changing High Street to be from the residential plan, residence only right now. I think what we're running into here is something that has been mentioned by I can't even list it on so far, which is, in different ways, we need to look at this holistically. And at some point, like you said, the mayor, you know, maybe soon, we need to look at the rest of the village in terms of residential parking as well. And I think that's a good time to revisit what has been done and to possibly make changes in the lower village again. But making them piecemeal, I think we've gotten a good lesson and a reaction that, that we can have from, from our neighbors, right? It's, people feel like they're getting singled out. They feel like it wasn't been part of a process. And, and I think there's a lot of validity, validity to what they're saying. When we look at this again in a larger process, there will be a committee, there will be more of a process there. And it shouldn't only be the upper village, it should be the entirety of the village that we look at again. Nobody's really eager to make lots of changes, but I think we should be looking at data, like Andrew, what you brought to the table about what is used and what isn't. But look at that in, in more areas as well. So, I'm against changing this at this time. I think we should defer until we have a larger scope that we're looking at.
Okay, yeah, ask, um, just like, I, what? If we didn't make changes, but we did make those parking changes on, on Northern, then what would, what happens to that twenty percent? Like what, it just?
We're not, we would not be in compliance in the operationalized area. Jonathan, is that a, is that a fair, are you still with us?
Don't mute. One sec.
Jonathan?
Sorry about that. Would you mind just repeating the question?
The question was, oh, go ahead, please. I mean, I, functionally, I guess my question is, what happens if we made the changes to Northern but didn't make the changes to High? And we would be, I guess, I don't know what the terminology is, but like, functionally, like out of compliance with the twenty percent requirement? What, 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 what would that mean? What does that do? Is that a thing?
Um, I, you might have to take a step back. I wasn't tuned in for this discussion, and I think John had worked with you guys on this, maybe?
Yeah, and his, his assessment was that twenty percent is a minimum. Can have more than twenty percent, but twenty, twenty percent is the minimum. And that within the, because there have been no modifications on the upper, it functionally, the, the upper, above the light is not, it's not operationalized as resident parking in this moment. So it's not, it's not the whole that we're looking at right now. Right now, the only two operationalized pieces are below Lunt Terrace and from the tracks to the light. And that's the area that we need to be considering. The reality is that every street in the village that is not within the residential parking permit zone right now is open for public parking, as Aaron has stated. And it is, I think it is worth noting that there are, to, to bring together both of your points, there are lots of ways that different neighborhoods are impacted with traffic, right? Like your neighborhood and my neighborhood, Aaron, is impacted by the school and the ambulance corps and town hall and, and the American Legion. Buses in particular, lots of walkers, teachers parking on the streets, students parking on the street. It's a public street, people can park on the street. Right, the goal here is not, the goal was not to keep the public off streets. The goal was not creating a quasi gated community on any block. The goal was to create opportunities for residents under the pressure of visitation to have options for parking that they could use, whether it was on their street or another street within the district. The reality is, visitors can and do park in the upper village. Is it likely that they're parking on Parrot and Paulding and Pine? No, because there's not much for them to do there. But up in our neighborhood, people park on the streets to get to trailheads through the Nelsonville Woods. So there's people walking on my block to get to the woods, people parking on my block. It's okay, it's a public street. This is not intended to keep cars off your street. It's intended to make sure that the parking there is reserved for, that you have, that you too have a place to park on the street. So I just, I think we want to be mindful of where this all began and the purpose, because somehow this has, this has morphed to the idea that there is in any village, on any village street, a bucolic nature, an undisturbed nature, an unimpacted nature. All of us in the village, no matter what street you're on, have some impact. And like, I just want to call out for comparison and, and to, to show how the, how the burden is borne around the village. Nine D, the church, the houses on Morris Avenue and Craigside have the school playing fields on both sides of the road, some of them right in their backyards against the football fields. Mountain Avenue has a school right in its backyard. As I said, Locust Cedar Orchard have the buses, P Back. Paulding Avenue has the Verizon Building at the end of Academy, yeah, Academy. Marion Avenue Benedict and Chestnut have a parking plaza, have a shopping plaza and a nursery school and a medical center and multifamily housing. Fair Street, as Aaron, Adam, I'm sorry, Andrew said, has wastewater treatment plant, the highway department, the county salt sheds, the restaurant apartments. We all have impacts. And I think part of the culture of the village is that we are a village and we're not somewhere in New Jersey. We're not a nowhere suburb. We are a place where you live in community and deal with things together. So, if, if, it might be that if you are agitated by cars slamming, by doors slamming, by people talking, by people walking past your street, kids playing, it might be, you're not
a place that we need to be in to be comfortable, right? It might not be the right place. But living in community and in a dense community, sound and activity is normal. What we deal with, all of us, in terms of over visitation, is not normal. And it's not sustainable, no question. But you don't live in a village and have no one on your street. On any street.
I think we've all made, have you said what you?
I mean, I, I feel like some variation of things that I've been thinking of has been said, but I do, I do think to point out, I, I too walk, I walk on High Street to bring my child to school and, and after school, same direction. And I do see, and I walk my dogs and I'm, I have a permit and I live on a street that's packed all the time with vehicles. And I know the, I know the, the pain and suffering that can happen. I also enjoy what is not a right, but a privilege to have a permit. I think High Street is underutilized. I think the very fact that there are so many places where people can park their vehicles on their property, I think it's a, is a luxury and that's great. You know, congratulations. I think, thinking of it as this like quiet, like separate street, I think is kind of irrelevant. You live in Cold Spring, it is a very active location. I, I think that just like, I, I just, I don't even know where that could come from. Like then this wasn't the right place to live, you know? I mean, because it is very active. And that's part of the, I think, what also brought all of us here is that, the beauty of that, having the nature and and activity that we can walk to places and so on. You know, I think these changes are impactful, but I think all these changes have been impactful. Most of them have been very positive. And when we've found that things are not working or need tweaking, we've been very open in trying to find creative ways to make those adjustments. And, you know, I'm I think the amount of time that we've spent on this, the amount of conversation, the amount of public input that we've taken, the letters, the frankly threats of action, you know? It's like this all is like, has a cost to all of us. And will, if, you know, will have a cost to all of us as taxpayers if things move forward. We all bear that cost. It's not just, it's not some one-off. And I think that's really important too. Well, I mean, we live like, someone's going to pay for it, and guess who's going to pay for it? Oh, like, it's not personal to me. I don't, I don't have any grief or issues with people on High Street. And like, that's not my, I have many more bigger issues. I just, I feel like, you know, I, I think we need to think about this as holistically as possible. And as you noted, all these other locations in a small, in a small area that have other impacts from other things. We, you know, we're part of the community, we all have to to deal in some way and make the best of what is an imperfect situation.
So it sounds like, go ahead.
I have a, I have a question from the board members. Why is the plan in front of us the best plan?
Because it's the plan that we all participated in writing, most of it. Because it's the plan that we all participated in writing, most of us, right? These are, these were decisions that we all made, that we participated in through the discussions over the last year, since Eliza and Office, the officer in charge made the recommendation. You've been at the table some, some of that time. So here's where we are and the we, who will carry it forward, who will carry it forward will be another iteration of this board. So there is some, there is some richness to, um, wanting to halt the progress we've made to date for someone else to think about it.
Wait, I'm sorry. The, the board is fluid, right? These are elected officials. I am fully seated as an elected official today. So whatever happens in the future, this is likely my ma- last meeting. So thanks for acknowledging it. The, um, but I think the, my point is based on the feedback we and that's where my question is coming from.
I would say, so I don't think any decision we make is perfect. I think we all have a lot of constraints that we work with in this board and we're human. Um, so I think we came up with a plan that, um, within those constraints and our abilities seemed to make a lot of sense. I also think in a democratic process, we hear all sides. And at the meeting last, was it last week, we heard strong opinions on both sides about the parking. Um, and when we were, uh, going through the chapter for the first time, we heard very strong opinions and some of them we were able to address and some of them we weren't and some of them they were on opposite sides and you had to either pick one or something in between, like that's governance. And, um, and so I think that's where we, that's how we have landed here. And, and so, you know, I think that's the best, that, that's the best that we can do. I do think also on the idea of waiting until the, you know, the next phase of the parking program. We know that it takes a long time, um, particularly if there's a, that, um, you know, kind of committee process and then, and then all of those phases and I think we, I wouldn't feel comfortable uh, being out of compliance or, you know, whatever that, that is, um, for, uh, with the state laws that enables this program. I don't think that that is prudent. Um, and I think that opens us up for liability as well.
I, I completely agree with you. Just, just to make my point clear, I just think there is a, a, a quick solution, which is to expand the residential parking area.
But that's not quick at all.
That's what requires, right? That it, it's a, it's a new, that is a code update that, that would require that full, that full process of expanding the area. So that's not quick.
And there are big issues that have to be considered. It, you, it's not a flip decision. There are three churches in the Upper Village that are exactly the opposite of Our Lady of Loretto. They have no parking. They have street parking. So we have to figure out how we're going to issue permits on the streets around those villages that accommodate people going to services on Sunday morning. So that's not a small thing.
Yeah, that's not what I was proposing at all.
But, but you just said it's quick. That's one of the reasons it's not quick. With, just like the committee that, that Evan sat on, met for months to, to sort through problems and make decisions, the expansion into the Upper Village will require thought too. We don't just, right? You don't just, you don't just say, all right, we're, tonight we're, we're expanding the Upper Village.
Maybe, maybe you didn't hear the example I gave. It's really minimally expanded, trivially expanded by, by just expanding the area and then converting it to the exact same, you said, this right now. There'd be no new permits, no new signage there, right? No change to anybody's behavior. There would have to be a public, um, you know, uh, public hearing, because
Well, that's not thinking holistically for that. You've, you've picked out your own street as, and, and an example, one that could be used. You're right. It is one that can be used in that makeshift way that you're describing. And we would need to have a conversation with Orchard Street folks, right? We'd need to have enough conversation with the church. But you, you are, it's, it's not, it's not just like, shh, nobody's listening, change that street. It still has to be a public process. So that's not where we are tonight. That's not where we are tonight. So the decision we, we have before us tonight is what this board has been discussing for weeks and where we are. That would have been a really, you know, might, might have been useful feedback quite some time ago.
I did email the idea several weeks.
So, so on, so it sounds like we are getting feedback from four of us that we wish to proceed with some modification on High Street. Aaron has posed. Um, is that correct? Do folks want to entertain the concept of opening an examination of, of the Upper Village before we make decisions with the questions before us tonight?
Can I make a suggestion that you read the sections that refer to High Street? Because we did, or not we, the board made changes based on public comment to, from the first iteration, from the first public hearing to the second public hearing.
Sure, I can do that.
To respond to public comment regarding parking on High Street.
I'm happy to do that. The best way, it's on the table here, the best way to understand it. I made a visual to correspond to the language because folks are correct, sorry? That it was, the language was confusing. So, so we had Bugsy remeasure and the language is laid out consistently for High Street. It's a schedule 14, Resident Permit Parking, and there are two entrances for High Street, two, two passages for High Street. High Street East, a distance of 39 feet from the driveway of Four High Street to the no parking sign located 24 feet south of the intersection with Haldane Street. That's this. High Street West, 513 feet from the driveway of Three High Street to the driveway of 25 High Street. So our options are no change, no change on High Street, one block of the east side of High Street, or two blocks of the east side of High Street. That's the decision that we need to make.
Are we making that absolute decision from now?
Well, we need to give a direction, or there needs to be direction so that we can write, we can write a document to go on. It sounds like there is a majority of the board wanting to make some change. Why don't we talk about, why don't we talk about what is, what is visualized in front of us right now, which is the block of McConville Park? The east, I'm sorry, the west side of McConville Park, the east side of the street. Is this shortening? As a compromise. I think that decision is based on not just content, but as Laura has stated, the, 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 the full, the full scenario in all of the village.
I feel most comfortable with the section along the park because it, it isn't in front of any homes that, um, you know, there, there are no homes that, that are directly on that side. I think that's
They're across the street, you mean?
Right, they're across the street, of course. Um, but, um,
The one block, not two.
Well, I, I think of the decisions that is more clear to me because, because there aren't residences on that side of the street.
And also for parking for the park.
And, and because people, people use the park. Um, I, and I guess I, I see both sides on, um, uh, on the direction inclined, southern, uh, southern portion. Yeah.
I could support that, but my preference would be for the whole of the east side of High Street.
I'm just waiting to hear your opinion. I mean, my preference is for the whole of High Street, but I, I, but I can, um, I think we can manage the one. And as I noted before, this is this is an evolving and living document and process. And while I don't want to have this conversation a million times, I do think that, you know, that's, that is a very, considering the amount of time that we spend, that is a very reasonable duty as a compromise, a thousand percent.
Just to have the McConville section.
Yeah, I mean, I think as, as Laura pointed out, it's next to the park that, you know.
Yeah. It's the park.
Yeah, sorry.
I can be comfortable with that as a compromise.
It doesn't, it doesn't replace all of the spots lost on Northern. But as we've said, there are effectively every street above the light is free, is free public parking. And at this time, and there will be evolving discussion about the expansion of the resident district by committee. How are you feeling about that? Is, oh, no, you said, you said that you would be comfortable with a compromise, but you would prefer.
Yes, I could support the compromise, but I prefer the length of the east side.
Stand you. I think, no, I don't. I think compromise is good. So then the language, so then the language of section schedule 126 dash 43 modifies, will, will need to be modified. I thought we had already changed that to be, well, if, right now it is resident parking from Main Street to, um, High Street, High Street to the 2024, to the section of how, right now it reflects, you're right. Right now it reflects, right now it reflects this, this portion as resident parking only, and this portion is resident parking. So
It was made at the, after the comment by the residents of High Street at the first little week hearing. That was changed in response to the common court.
So in this, if, if we are talking about using only that block, then we, it needs to be reflected in the language and in the map. Map is for our visual support, but we need to modify to make sure that we're, it reflects what we are describing right now, which is that one block, one side of, one block on High Street.
I think the, the map is correct.
The map is correct. What would, yes, the map is correct and the language is, that's, you're right. Right? We've talked about this so many different iterations, yes, and reflects this.
Not this, this is what includes.
No, that's, that was someone showing, that was, that was submitted last week, someone showing driveways and parking areas. That was just a
Got it. Yeah, and there are a couple errors on it, but it was really helpful for understanding the spatial.
That was public comment. That wasn't created.
Yeah, yeah, this is the one created. So in that case, we will
That's public comment by Miss Van Bore. He says it's impacted.
It's on the table. Okay, so in terms of leading this session and working with the clerk and the village attorney to finalize for vote, we are addressing, we are proceeding with the changes on Fair Street along with the uh, downstream changes to turns and intersections, turns in one ways. And on High Street, we are proceeding with public parking in one block, the block between Halbain and Northern on the east side of High Street. The block of High Street meaning Maine and Halbain will remain from number four to 24 feet south of the stop sign on Halbain as resident only parking. Everybody on board with that? So we need to make these changes, give the, put the final document together and come back for vote.
Good.
Okay. Thank you.
Should we drag the last, oh, so another part of the chapter, the point after change is the proposed, um, enforcement of electrical via EV charging. Um, you know, enforcement that it can only be used while actively charging.
That's the, the current text.
Wherever electric vehicle chargers are installed on village streets and our property, only electric vehicles may be parked in those spaces and only for the duration of time while a vehicle is actively charging. Karen Vamos submitted a question or a recommendation, would you, yeah.
Can you keep the assumption?
Yes, 126 dash 18 points. So she suggested, um, having a grace period of 30 minutes after charging. So that if charging is completed between, oh, first grace period for 30 minutes after charging is completed. And then second, if charging is completed between 11 PM and 7 AM, that grace period extends through the overnight time period. I think they both make a ton of sense and it was something that I have noticed in the COVID. I didn't have a good solution for it and I think she proposed a really good solution. So, and as she explains in the justification, particularly for overnight, there are slow chargers. So you plug it in and then you go to bed and then it's charged in the morning. Um, and it will be residence for the most part. Um, they don't have to wake up in the middle of the night to move their cars. They don't get a fine.
I don't know, I have, I am not an owner of an electric vehicle, so I don't know how this works. Is, will, does the meter identify, does the charger identify active charging versus complete? Like, is there a visual? Like, what does an officer look at at the end?
I guess what I'm worried about is that, how does the officer know that you're actively charging?
Um, so I mean, I think the, um, we talked about it before, it can be through the, the technology, but I think in, in practice, um, uh, I think a grace period, like you're right, we wouldn't be able, I guess we wouldn't be able to tell if it's 30 minutes after unless, unless they're kind of noticing it. I mean, I, I think, I think in practice, we, um, uh, notice, I don't think our officers are there in like the split second that something is done, right? So, um,
But then they'd have to go back.
Well, if they, like, it, it might require them to circle back around to make sure that that vehicle is, like, the limits. Yeah, again, I, I don't know if there's a way to know at what moment it stopped charging, but then if I think the primary concern is, um, a vehicle that is not charging using the space. And I think that that, um, called Iced, right? Like, an, an internal combustion engine vehicle takes up an EV space and that happens all the time. And so I think the primary reason for this is to avoid having those spaces taken by car that could not possibly charge. Um, I think the, the piece of actively charging here is mostly to protect against that. The second is for someone to then just park their Park their EV there and then sit for for two days. So I I think it would take a little, I think. The implementation of this will take some training with the parking enforcement officers and we'll have to figure this out with the. Maybe with the EV charger company of what's the kind of practical way to enforce this, but I do.
And often this gets solved by just having the fees and. Charging system to charge you a dollar. There's something like that and that gives a disincentive for keeping it put in for two to three days. Right, and they have to be attractive and a lot of times you can have blackout times, so overnight, it's okay, that's fine. We could say we're not gonna, you know, charge you during these hours or something and then the officers are still moving.
I think that what, what, well, I under, now I understand the question she's raising. Um, I think that the enabling, what we have done here is provide enabling legislation. And then, and then. Implementation is something that we have to work out via policy.
Um, I have asked you a question, um. Does the charging system and the software identify who the vehicle's licensed to?
But I do like that concept of the, once it's done.
You know, maybe you get a grace period of thirty minutes or whatever, but then after that you're being charged for sitting there.
Yeah, I mean, I do think you have to keep in mind that these are slow chargers. It's not like the fast chargers where you're done in thirty minutes and then you get back on the highway.
Once it's charged and it and it. You filled up to a hundred percent, then, you know, you paid for that and then you have thirty minutes to move your vehicle, let's say. And then after that, if you're still sitting there with it plugged in because you haven't come to get your vehicle, then you are now incurring a fee. So, um. Jonathan, am am I, am I thinking correctly here that we've, we have laid out? Enabling legislation here and the kinds of details that are being discussed right now are our policy and implementation issues. That don't need to be reflected in the code.
I think so, yeah.
Thank you. That's great. I also, I I think with a case like this, it might be. Um, yeah, I think we'll learn from the company and.
Well, this also allows now for EV charging wherever they are. That's correct. Anywhere there, there are public. Vehicle chargers on municipal property.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's important not to box yourselves in with the technology and, uh, you know, potential changes uh to the technology.
Alright, so. But Marjorie and I will work with Jonathan and get a draft circulated for a vote at a subsequent session. We now have. Um. An executive session, so we have, we have two, we have two kinds of sessions tonight. Um, one is uh an executive session. Um, to discuss the employment history of certain individuals and to discuss acquisition of real property. Um, we will come out of that executive session. Um, and then vote to adjourn and then we have a, after that. Which is not open to the public is a closed session for attorney-client consultation. So, Michael, we're gonna. The intent, you're welcome, you're welcome to stay, but the next time we come back to the public will be adjourning.
Thanks, Michael.
So I'll make a motion to enter executive session to discuss employment history of certain individuals and propose acquisition of real property. Their disclosure may substantially affect value, might well. Second, all in favor? It was Andrew's second. Thank you. We're gonna stop recording.
Do you want me to hang out or do you want me to just plan to come back for our attorney client?
Um, it is, the time is now eight fifty four. Um, and in this same minute of eight fifty four, I made a motion to exit executive session. Trusty Woods seconded, we all voted in favor to leave executive session, so decisions were taken. Are we recording?
Yeah.
Okay, and now I will make a motion to adjourn. Session.